And 11 motor vehicle crash collisions. Our fire safety tip for the month includes cooking safety. It is very important to be aware that cooking fires are the leading cause of home fires and home injuries. By following a few safety tips, you can prevent these dangerous situations, which includes staying alert while cooking. If you are sleepy or have consumed alcohol, avoid using the stove or stove top. Always stay in the kitchen while cooking. Never leave the stove and heated appliances unattended. Use a timer to remind yourself to check on your food regularly. Keep combustible items like oven mitts, wooden utensils, food packaging and towels away from your stove top. And last but not least, keep children and pets at least three feet away from cooking areas. That is all for this month. Any questions?
Mahalo for your report, board members. Any questions for fire department?
Thanks for being here. The two, you said there were two alarms, activated alarms. Were those businesses or residences?
Um, to be honest, off the top of my head, I'm not sure right now, but I can address that next month. Typically, when it starts raining like it is now with the more rainy season, we're getting a lot of even single family home activated alarms, but occasionally it's more so business. Yeah.
No problem. Just checking. I haven't heard that activated alarms in a few months. So thank you. No need to follow up. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions? Yes, go ahead, Ethan.
I've noticed an uptick in sort of vandalism and graffiti around the Central Strip there of Waihewa. I'm wondering if the police department has noticed it as well and if they're doing, or sorry, my bad. I'll hold that question.
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions for the fire department? From the community, any questions for our fire department? And virtually, any questions for our fire department? Okay, hearing and I do have one question that came in. And the question is that where the old DOE offices are and are, it's being rebuilt, where the fire took place. What kind of situation was it because of the fire? Because some people are saying, we don't know, but saying, is it because there are people that are living down in the gouge that came up to cause a fire? Or is it because the trees are just over, you know, so? From what you saw there, is there any report on what caused or what created the fire?
Unfortunately, I was not part of the crew or my crew here today. We weren't the ones that responded. Currently, that is in, under investigation with our investigations bureau. So I could contact them. I could let you guys know next month for the next meeting. But yes, I technically do not have any info on that fire tonight. Yeah, sorry.
No, thank you very much. And if you can come back to us or send back a report, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
So much. Mahalo for being here.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
To our HFD, everyone.
Enjoy the holidays. We're not going to see you till January. Bye, guys.
Okay, and calling up our police department.
Good evening, Lieutenant Romal Baisa with the Honolulu Police Department, Waihele Police Station. Statistics for the previous month from October 15th to November 15th, for the Waihewa area, we had two assault cases, four burglary cases. Those are break-ins to homes. We had 61 motor vehicle collisions, but those include all the fender benders and stuff. Three of those were considered major where the cars had to be towed away. Zero robberies, five car break-ins and 1,332 calls for service. For our safety tips, because the holidays are coming up, I'd like to give some safety tips for traveling. I know there's a lot of people that are traveling. Before you go on your trip, share your itinerary with trusted family or friends. Research your destination, find out about local laws, customs, any common scams and any current events in the area. Know the phone numbers for emergency services in the, of course, the United States is 911, but other countries are different. If you can enroll in some safety alert programs, so you're well informed as far as if there's some kind of a natural disaster in the area while you're there. And then keep digital copies of information, important documentations such as your passport and visas and stuff. Of visas you get at the airport. While traveling, be alert and aware as always. And then always secure your belongings. Use hotel safes if possible. And do not be flashy and try not to post your adventures on social media while you're on your trip. That's a good way to get your house broken into. Post it after the fact. Just suggestions if you guys are willing to take it.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Board members, any questions for HPD? Yes, go ahead, Ethan.
I have a feeling I know what you're gonna ask.
I know you may cut at the end of the question, but have you noticed the graffiti and is there anything that HPD is doing about it?
So the graffiti is, most graffiti is are done on private property. So unless they report the company or the homeowners report the information. I'll be honest with you, a lot of officers will see it. They'll make a mental note of it. But we're not going to make a report just off the, just off of seeing it, right? Unless it's on public property or the traffic boxes, even light poles and stuff. We have our officers patrolling as normal and we will bring it up even more so now that you brought it up. Yeah, we'll let them know. Thank you.
Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, there's an awful lot of calls for service. What does that entail?
Calls for service? That is anything and everything you can think of from HFD calls, like there's a cat stuck at the top of my tree to there's a centipede in my house, believe it or not. Yeah, we get all kinds of calls, you name it. And then, of course, all the way to, we haven't had, we didn't have any attempted murders this previous 30 days that I know of, that I can remember. But yeah, all the way to attempted murder case and murder cases.
Saturday night, there were, was a large party on Ehilio Place. But I called 911 about because they were setting off explosions and large fireworks from about 6:30 to 9:30. Do you know if anybody responded to that?
If we get called, if we get sent by our dispatchers, we have to respond. Yeah, we cannot just blow it off, pardon the pun.
Because they just kept it going for three hours after I called.
Yeah, our officers would go and then, you know, most of the time, especially with fireworks and fireworks season is coming up, right? By the time the officers get there, it's either going to be done or they'll see our pilot lights, our blue lights, and then they'll stop. You know, it's hard for us to, to witness the violation itself. We can, we have that law that was passed where a neighbor or another person can witness it, video record it, and then submit the recording to us. And we can use that to enforce. Otherwise, most of those are violations and we have to view it for us to enforce it. Okay?
And go ahead, TJ.
I just have two quick questions. The motor vehicle collisions you said we had, is that just for the 96786 zip code?
Yes.
Oh, wow, we had a lot there.
Yes, you guys, you guys include a little bit of Mililani, right? Waikalani side is 58? Oh, 56, okay. Yeah, it should be all 96786. Yeah, we don't touch, sector 2 doesn't touch? Right?
No, 86, 96786 is Waihele, 89 is Mililani.
258 touch, 96789, no, right? Yeah. Okay, maybe a little bit of, of the North Shore side, 96791, Waialua end, end. Yeah, but not, not too much.
There were 61 motor vehicle collisions?
Yes, yes. But like I said, that includes the, any, any type of fender bender.
Like somebody bangs your car in the food land shopping, I mean, in the parking lot.
Yes, yes. As long as they call the police, it gets reported on our system.
Okay, and then my second question was, the five break-ins, were they business or residential? Do you know?
You know, I did not go that far into it unless I look at each report. I cannot tell just by looking at it. Sorry, I didn't, yeah. All it says is it's a burglary.
Have you seen an increase in? Have you seen an increase in the business break-ins?
Um, I can't say that I have. I know that five compared to last, the previous month is like a couple more. But not, I'm not going to say there's like a rash of, of break-ins into businesses or homes.
Okay, and I'm gonna just dovetail off of that and ask you, it's a, it's a big umbrella. But lately, we've had conversations with people that have been sent here from Washington State and Oregon. And they were recently in the Waihele Shopping Center asking for food banks and for resources, and this was on the Veterans Day holiday.
Okay.
And when they were questioned why they were asking, they said that they had been sent here by
Their government.
Yeah.
Okay.
Have you folks had an increase? Because I'm not sure if you take like addresses when you're responding to something.
It depends. It depends on what it is. But I know that that does happen. In fact, we tried to do that a couple of years ago. Our, I don't know if it's the city or the state tried to see if we can connect somebody with a homeless person, with a person, a family member on the mainland. They're doing the same thing here, but then I think their, their allure is Hawaii, right? Such a great state. Don't you want to be homeless over there? You don't have to freeze in, you know what I mean, during the winters and stuff. So I know it happens. I can't tell you how many times or often or what the statistics are.
So when you folks come across someone that is homeless recently, being sent to Hawaii, because Hawaii does have a program, I'm sorry, the City and County of Honolulu does have a program where they can offer, there are funds available, I won't say how much, but there are funds available
Sure.
to send these people back to their home if there's someone on the other side willing to accept them.
Right.
Have you folks seen an increase in that or?
I can't tell you. I don't know. That is, that's not really, I mean, when we encounter a person who is homeless, can I just say where you live? Yeah, so we just deal with what the incident is at hand. So in other words, you know,
Yeah, I got you. Okay.
care whether homeless or not. We just address the crime.
Yeah, we just noticed that there's been a huge rise in those numbers, especially in Waihewa, and I think because, you know, because we are such a loving community and we wrap our arms around everybody. So I was just wondering, because it was disturbing for me to see that day because there are quite a few community members in the shopping center and they were a disturbance to everybody that was there. So thank you for sharing. I appreciate it.
Yeah, might be a question for another agency, not us. Yes.
Gotcha. Thank you so much.
Any other questions from the board for HPD?
I'm sorry, I didn't introduce Sergeant John Yoshioka and then Sergeant Lucius Crabbe over there. There, there right now are two sergeants that are in charge of the district, which includes Mililani, Waihewa and North Shore. That's why I was asking, when you heard me talk about the numbers, those are just deep areas where, that are the division within the, within the district.
I'm sorry, I'm just going to repeat.
I'm sorry? Yes, they are. Yeah, they're going to be answering all of your questions. None to me. Yeah.
But if I can just ask you to repeat, Sergeant George Uchioka?
John, J O N, Yoshioka and Lucius, L U C I U S, Crabbe.
Oh, welcome to Waihewa.
Thanks for joining us. We appreciate it. Did you want to say a few words? Do you want to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you very much.
No, no, hold on. We're not done. Hold on.
I'm sorry.
Any questions from the public or HPD? Yes, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
Aloha. I just wanted to thank you. It's a great report as always. I wanted to know more information on, as you prepare for fireworks season, how many videos were used to enforce the fireworks law? And, you know, given the violence and deaths of last year, are you guys ramping up that type of enforcement?
Oh, excuse me, Ekala Ma, your name, please?
Oh, Nani Brown Koinoa. My name is Nani Brown.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. To ask you a question, the enforcement already started because of the incident last year, as you guys know. We already have collaboration with other agencies as far as stopping all these illegal fireworks that are coming in at the ports. As far as what we're doing here and now, we do have, we were aware, of course, of all the fireworks encounters that we have every year. And so we beef up our personnel staffing whenever this season comes up. So we try, we try, and then same thing, like you said, right, with the enforcement, we have to visually see it. We have to see the violation or we have to have witnesses. That's why it's very important to share the information with our community. So that if you guys want to do the videotape, right, and then send the information to us, send the recording to us. Do we confiscate? Yeah, yeah. If we see it, then yes, definitely.
Hey, any other questions for HPD? Okay, virtually, any questions for HPD? Any hands up? Nope. Okay, then I do have that one question I mentioned to before from a resident who asked if HPD could shed some light on the new rules that the BOE Department of, you know, Education has put out regarding the bikes, you know, the e-bikes and all that that are riding all over. Because they are going to be enforcing that, they said, as far as the age bracket, who can be riding and all that. It also impacts the families who were allowing their kids to ride to school because now they have to find a way to get the kids to school. So the resident just asked for some comment from HPD, if you're involved in that and how is it going to work for not just safety on the roads, because in the areas that they showed the video where the kids are riding, it was they were riding with the cars in the road, you know, and so how will, how can this work together so that everyone is safe?
Same thing when all this, this e-bike law started coming up. Our, our part in it is mostly education in the schools. So anything that DOE enforces within the schools is up to them. What HPD does is enforce on the outside of the school. So anybody who's going to school with their e-bike, under 15, not wearing helmet, going too fast. We do encounter a lot of hiccups because the problems that law enforcement encounter is, for example, a lot of these e-bikes look alike. So some of them, you cannot tell if there are, there are different classes of e-bikes. Class one, class two, class three, there's different classes of mopeds. Those are some of the things that we have to deal with. So just by looking at a person, unless they're doing some kind of violation that is very obvious, it's very difficult for us to stop somebody because it could, it could border on, we're not supposed to do that. You know, it's a violation of somebody's civil rights, you know what I mean? So we do have a lot of hiccups, but we enforce the very obvious ones that we can, we can find. Yeah, and then as far as checking their, the serial numbers, the registration. All bikes are supposed to be registered, by the way. Yeah, it's hard unless we can like see an absence of the sticker where it's supposed to be. It's hard for us to, to enforce initially. Yeah. A lot of times we do get called and then that's when we stop them and then, yeah.
So the DOE is not in contact with you folks or the BOE, they're not in contact with you folks?
Like I said, I, all I know is that our community policing team are very good at going to schools, educating. I think that's as far as the collaboration. The letter to the students just went out, I think, yesterday or the day before. I'm sorry, yesterday or Sunday. What's today? Sunday? Yes, so, so I don't know. I haven't, I haven't talked to our community policing about it. If they're doing anything with the schools, but I know that from the time that all this e-bike started popping up, our community policing team already started going to schools and educating the students, yeah, and even parents.
Okay, thank you. I'll relay that to the resident. Thank you very much.
I've noticed a marked decrease in young kids on mopeds on Rose Street since school started. So I think very much that there is some word getting out to the kids at school.
Sure, and I'll notify our patrol officers and our other lieutenants also.
Terrific. Okay, one more question.
Just real quick, so now that the letter has gone out, DOE has notified families. Do you think HPD will be able to get more funds to maybe help with this? Because there have been so many accidents on those with the e-bikes. There have been quite a few in our community, but I know that in other communities, there has been a marked increase in it. So there's something that maybe community members can do as far as asking for more positions to be, or maybe the money is allocated differently so that we can get more officers on the streets when we know our children are on the e-bikes. Is that something that's?
I can tell you that one of the biggest things we do as a district is we have projects that we, that we work on. We have off-duty officers that would come out and they sign up for it a few times a week. And they do enforcement, specific enforcement. So we were really big on the e-bikes. We kind of slowed down. We were more enforcing speeding and DUIs because of all the fatalities that's happening. But yeah, it's, a lot of our projects are geared towards the current whatever's hot right now. So e-bikes is probably going to go back up again once the, the traffic speeding and a fatality goes down. Yeah, because it's always in our, in our, in our budget.
Thank you so much. And we do know that the break, the winter break is coming up, so I'm sure
Yes.
you guys will be busy out there. Please stay safe on the roads.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I think we're good. Thank you very much. And welcome to our new officers aloha. And happy holidays. Okay, for board members, at this point, I'd ask for, I'm going to ask for your support on making a move on our agenda. Further down in our agenda, we were going to get a update report in the Queens Medical Center, Waihele, Waihele, on the new state-of-the-art computed tomography CT program equipment. We're gonna move that up if without, if without your objection, we'd like to move that up because we do have two of the staff from Queens to give us an update on the CT equipment that came to Waihele. Kind of an early Christmas present for our town. So at this time, I'm asking for your support and agreement to move these items up on the agenda. Do I have an agreement?
So move.
Yeah, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we take the request out of order and allow Queens Waihele to come in and speak right now.
Are all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And virtually?
I support.
I'm sorry, we need a second to the motion.
I'll second.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Got it. Okay, we're good. Thank you.
Okay.
Good afternoon or good evening, actually. My name is Diana Motley. I'm the director for Waihele's Emergency Department, as well as West Queens Department and?
Mike Holberg, Director of Security and Facilities for West and Waihele.
So the two things I really wanted to update you on is we did get our new CT in, in middle of October. It is up and running right now, and currently it is for inpatient use. So that's Waihele, Waihele's patients that come to our ED. We are looking at possibly in the future having it more also for outpatient. That's just not an option right now. So, but anyway, it is up, running and brand new and the broom is beautiful. So we're very happy to see the changes that are going on over there. Any questions with the CT?
How, how much is it being used since it came to Waihele?
Constant, constant, all day.
Like all day? Wow. So is it a lot of Waihele residents or just coming from different areas?
It's gonna be predominantly Waihele. We also have a lot of military presence.
That's terrific. Joe into the mic. Joe, Joe.
It is in the ED. So about, you probably remember when we first took over, when Queens first took over Waihele, it was, we had the trailer outside, but that trailer is gone now and it is moved inside. We opened a shell space for it and it's
Yeah, I was gonna say you must have expanded it somehow.
Uh, we did a little moving around.
If you, if you remember where the old medical records were, it's, it's located there.
So I just wanted to clarify, the CT services are just for inpatients. So if you're admitted to the ED, the emergency department, you're able to make use of the CT equipment that's there. So any other, like if somebody needs to get a CT, like your doctor orders it, they do need to go elsewhere.
Yep, they'll need to go elsewhere for now. Hopefully, we can open that up. But now you have to be an emergency department patient at Waihele.
Thank you so much.
Yep. And then the other thing I wanted to let the community know is that we are actually going to start expanding our ED, starting in January. It'll be about a year and a half, two-year project. And then the biggest thing the community will notice is now where you enter the emergency department from the beginning of the hospital, you're actually going to come around the side. We're doing some changing of, you know, traffic patterns and everything. So you're going to come in that a little bit more towards the back of the hospital. I'm sorry.
Joe into the mic. Joe.
Joe, please pick up the mic.
Where used to be offices in there or you talk about the other side?
Offices were there.
It used to be where the doctor's lounge is. It's on that area. So what we're doing is we're relocating the entrance and the triage so that we can break down and remodel and make the waiting room bigger. So we're expanding that side first, and once we complete that, we'll move back over into our new space, the new waiting room, and then we'll start with the remodel of the ED. So we're going to go from 12 patient rooms to 24 patient rooms. That's, that is a lot. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you'll see a lot of movement, but be patient with us because anytime you're expanding or building or anything, it's going to be traffic patterns, you're going to be switched up and, you know, we'll have a lot of signage and a lot of work around it, but just so you're aware.
Okay, great. Yeah, you answered my question. I was asking, gonna ask about signage so that people, when they come into park, when they come in and they need to access the ED, there will be signage for them.
Plenty of signage. We also have security guards outside that can also help with movement.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board on this? Questions from the community? And questions virtually, anyone, any questions for our Queens new CT program? Okay, then I do have one follow-up if you don't mind. So how do we get, help get the word out? Because a lot of people I've spoken to about, hey, you know, we have new equipment, you know, it was had the blessing a few weeks ago and all that, but a lot of people were not aware. They're like, really? And I'm like, yeah. And so they, they said they would tell their doctors, you know, that they'd rather go here because it's closer. But how can we help you get the word out or is it already, you're already packed and you don't need or what can we do to get?
We have reached out to our medical professionals in, in the community so that they are aware of it. Because typically, it's going to be who gives you or gets you set up for the CT. Most people aren't sitting at home in the morning thinking, I need a CT today. But anyway, so yeah, we'll, it'll be the docs or the physicians in the community will help with that. Word of mouth is going to help, you know.
Okay. Is there anything we can do besides that, like to, I mean, do you guys send out flyers or anything or like you said, it's mainly the doctors who would do that, the physicians?
I think when we get to the point where we can open up an outpatient avenue or throughput into the CT area, then that would be, we'll come to you folks for help.
Okay.
But right now on the inpatient side, we see about 60 to, 60 to 70 patients a day. So those patients, a lot of them go to the CT.
Okay, that's fantastic. That's a good, I'll give, give them that number. That's, you guys are busy. That's daily. That's fantastic.
Daily, yes.
Okay, and my last thing I have to, I got this shirt, so I have to show it to you.
I love your shirt. I saw it already. I did, I did.
But it's true. I was born in Waihele Hospital. My friend gave, I don't know where they got it.
Very good.
But I was about to share, I was so thrilled. Anyway, thank you so much for being here. If no other questions, can we give a round of applause?
Thank you. Good evening.
Mahalo. And drive home safely and happy holidays. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for allowing me to do that move on the agenda. Going back to our agenda, we'll pick up on item three, monthly reports. If Congresswoman Tokuda's office is on board?
Hi.
Hi.
It's a long time no see. I kept having scheduling issues.
Nice to see you.
I'm so glad to be here. Thank you for, for letting me get this update. It was emailed earlier in the month. Things have been moving really fast. I'm sure you're aware. So a lot of that is kind of past tense, right? The government's back open. On that note, I'll, I'll read Rep Tokuda's statement about her vote on that. Today's vote to end the shutdown is not a victory. It may reopen government, but it shuts the door on affordable healthcare for millions. This bill does nothing to help parents take their kiki to the doctor, seniors afford their medications, or small business owners cover their workers. It does nothing for families struggling to put food on the table or keep a roof over their heads. Instead, it keeps the status quo, a status quo that is failing everyday Americans crushed by the rising costs of groceries, gas, rent and childcare. For the past 43 days, I've seen the pain and frustration firsthand at food distributions, airports and medical facilities across our islands. That's why I voted no. We can't just do nothing to fix the affordability crisis families are living through. And I will continue to fight to make everything from food to healthcare accessible for the people of Hawaii. And so, yeah, that was her statement on that. And but during the, the government shutdown, Rep Tokuda was out there working, our office was working. And she held a Teletown Hall with over 1,300, 500, or 13,500 participants. She met with healthcare leaders statewide, focusing on how Medicare cuts have already started to impact care here in Hawaii. Rep. Tokuda has been on the ground supporting food distribution efforts statewide. She's held talk stories at the annual Hawaii Farmers Union United Convention to discuss how to best support local agriculture and strengthen our food systems. And had held several other talk stories with various organizations to understand the impact of this administration's policies and the government shutdown to organizations supporting Hawaii families and residents. She also met with air traffic controllers across the islands to learn more about their working conditions and the impact of the government shutdown. Rep. Tokuda's recent legislative actions include leading 21 of her Democratic colleagues in a letter urging the administration to reverse layoffs at the Community Development Financial Institutions Fund, which promotes economic revitalization impacting native Hawaiian-owned organizations and native businesses. She also led a letter to the president, signed by 26 of her colleagues, asking him to reverse his decision to restart test detonation of nuclear weapons. And Rep. Tokuda is co-sponsoring the No Pay for Congress During Default or Shutdown Act, HR 1973, which would withhold pay from members of Congress when the government shuts down or the debt limit is reached to ensure lawmakers face the same financial consequences as the workers and the families they represent. The Trump administration has removed coffee tariffs following a bipartisan letter led by Rep. Tokuda urging the administration to remove coffee from tariffs. Addressing this development, Rep. Tokuda stated, "The administration's decision reflects what is possible when members of both parties work together with industry and local communities to advocate for a common sense solution." "The Congressional Coffee Caucus will continue working across the aisle and with the administration to strengthen our nation's competitiveness, support our businesses, and ensure that our nation's trade policies serve hardworking American people." To read her full response, please visit her website, tokuda.house.gov. And I am ready to take any questions and get them answered by the appropriate folks.
Thank you for the report. And again, it's good to see you. Board members, any questions for, yes, go ahead, Joe.
Just a quick one. Will the rep be holding any, any town halls during the holidays?
Um, I don't believe so. We don't have anything scheduled. We just had one at the beginning of, I believe it was this month.
Thank you.
Or it was the ending of October, it was one of them.
Yeah. Hi, thank you for being here. I was wondering, I know that the federal government contacted the states wanting people who are on SNAP, part of the SNAP program, to re-register because of all the people who are on it. From what I read, there was 100 and, well, 29 of the states have complied with that. And out of those 29 states, 186,000 people are getting SNAP benefits who are dead. And there are just 500,000 people out of those 29 states who are getting paid in at least two states, some up to six states. So given that, is Representative Tokuda supporting that Hawaii re-registers all the people who are part of the program?
I'll go ahead and bring that to her attention and get you an answer, okay?
Thank you.
I have a question, Joe.
Okay, go ahead, TJ.
Hi, Nicole, thanks for being here. I just wanted to know, being that while the shutdown is over, we are still gonna be facing cuts through Medicare and some of the various, excuse me, some of the Medicaid programs. Has Rep. Tokuda reached out to organizations such as a Wahiwa Health Center in our community to see what kind of support she can provide on behalf of the federal government to organizations like that, especially the ones in rural towns?
So I know that she has been reaching out across the state, right, to to medical facilities and and whatnot? I don't know if she, the exact ones, right? I don't have a list for you. But I can ask if she's reached out to any in Wahiwa.
Yeah, we just have one, and if you could bring that back, and if there's any kind of support that either the community can provide, or businesses, or doctors' offices in and around our area can support, we'd love to hear about it.
Okay.
Hey, thank you, TJ. Any other questions from the board? Hey, yeah, Erin?
Hi, thank you. Hi, Nicole, thanks for being here tonight. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Yeah, you're good. Sorry, I'm under the weather. Okay. Um, I just wanna say that in that statement that you read from Representative Tokuda, I, I would take the language out that we've returned to status quo. So simply because the government reopened, there are a lot of people who have not been made whole. And there's a lot of people who lost money and have not regained that. And that it was not status quo in the sense for those who require the ACA, the, you know, government Medicaid, that they are having to pay substantially more. So opening the government did not mean returning to status quo. We, as citizens, lost a lot in terms of our healthcare benefits, people's wages, you know, time with family. So I just, just being wary of using status quo cuz I think that's anything but in our current environment.
I'll pass that on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Any other questions virtually? Okay, and coming back to the board here, any other questions? Okay, I think we're good then.
Thank you.
Yep. Nope, nobody else out there. Okay, thank you, Nicole. Please take care and give our regards to the Congresswoman.
I will.
Oh, I'm sorry, we do have one more question. I apologize. Come, I apologize.
No worries.
I'm sorry, stand by, Nicole.
Hi, my name is Daniel Gabriel. I'm a community member. I wanna know if Rep. Tokuda supports spending $24.6 million of our harder earned tax dollars on climate resilience initiatives in Honduras. Thank you.
Okay. Wait, did you say climate resilience in Honduras?
Yes.
Okay.
Gabriel, will you join us? Oh, when we get, when we get a response, probably at our next meeting, you know, we'll provide, okay, very good. Okay, any other questions for Congresswoman's office?
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
If I get the the answers before next meeting, I'll, I'll email them to you. So if you could get Mr. or Daniel's contact information, so you can get him.
Yes.
That would be great.
Before he leaves, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so Gabriel, before you leave, if I can get your like email or phone number, perfect, okay. Any other questions for Congresswoman's office? Kate Hiriun, thank you again, Nicole.
Thank you.
And happy holidays. Okay, so we're moving on to our next presenter, which would be our United States Army Lieutenant Julia Gogo.
Hi, everyone. US Army Garrison Hawaii is holding their final two job fairs of the year. They're gonna be on November 24th and December 8th in the Hilo Mano Military Reservation Training Room from 8:30 to 2:00 PM. You can go online to www.himwr.com to schedule in advance and, or they do accept walk-ins. 25th Infantry Division and US Army Garrison Hawaii would just like to say thank you as we conducted our annual JPMRC exercise that ended today, actually, for your patience and understanding while we conducted that training. That's all. If there's any questions.
Okay, any questions from the, yes, go ahead.
Um, short question. Um, uh, the Wheeler Army Airfield, is that run by the same people who run Schofield? I mean, the leadership?
We all fall, fall under commanding general, Major General Bartholomew.
Okay.
But the, the aviation commander is who technically runs Wheeler, but we, we do all fall under the leadership at Schofield.
Okay, so the, the maintenance on Wheeler, is that the same? Is that under that umbrella of Schofield, or is that?
Yes.
Okay. My questions, and I brought this up maybe three months ago.
Yes, I, I still don't have the answer just cuz our team is, like, today was their first day back at work.
Oh, okay.
Just so that there, people are still trickling back in.
Yeah.
But they have your question, I promise.
Yeah, so those trees that I inquired about, I'm sure the beetle got it because they no longer have tops.
Okay.
So they're gone, and they're probably need to be cut. But yeah, it's kind of vital that we get those trees treated because once one has it, the rest of those trees, it spreads very quickly. But I, I thank you for trying at least. Thank you.
Sylvia, before you, could you give us a quick brief refresh on, on your request on the trees?
Yeah, this has to do with the coconut beetle, rhinoceros beetle, thank you, rhinoceros beetle. And every day when I drive to work, I've noticed that the trees have slowly start to lose their tops. And this is on, on Royal Palm as well, but those trees have been treated. So I just asked about three months ago, and I understand the army, you know, the leadership was a little bit different, so it took some time. But just wondering if the Wheeler people were aware that the beetle was in their, on their property and spreading very quickly? So that, that's the background to it.
Yep. Now, I just wanted to that everyone knew what this was about, but, but it is an issue. And we do have that issue going on, like you said, on Royal Palm Drive and in other areas of Wahiwa as well. Okay, go ahead, Joe, you have a question?
Uh, last week, we had our annual Veterans Day Parade. The army was not there. Is there a reason why they were not there?
During the government shutdown, our activities were limited and we were not permitted to be there.
Was that a federal?
That's from the Department of War.
They really, they chose not to honor the ones who went before you guys, yeah?
It's not like specifically for the veterans. It was for all community events. We were not permitted. It just so happened that the government shutdown did fall over Veterans Day. So that was just one of the community events that was impacted.
That's pitiful. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Just, oh, go ahead, Yvonne.
Thank you. So since we're not gonna have a meeting next month, I was just wondering if you could give us an update on any trainings or exercises that might be happening this month, next month, until our next meeting?
So this month, there are no more training exercises. The JPMRC was like our big one. So for the rest of this month, it's kind of recovery and then Thanksgiving. I don't 100% know of trainings that's scheduled in December. They will be limited just because we do start our period of block, holiday block leave that allows people to take that two weeks off if they choose to go visit family and that kind of thing. But I can find out, but to my knowledge, there aren't any big ones scheduled.
Yep.
Okay, and if I may add, if you don't mind, Yvonne, just so you know, I usually would get a report, you know, the monthly week training schedule, but for the last situation of shutdowns here and there and whatnot, we haven't received that. So as soon as we can get back on board, or the government can get back on board, then we'll be getting those and we can, you know, I would be, you know, sharing that with everyone. But just so you know, it's not just us. It's, it's just the situation in our, in our state, in our country. Okay, any other questions for the military? Virtually, any questions for our military? Okay, all right, we're good. Thank you very much. Happy holidays. Okay, then we're gonna move on to our Navy. Daniel, are you on board? Got it? Navy, board, on board. Yeah, yeah, nobody caught it, my humor. Okay. Okay, so I guess.
Actually, I, I did have one question for military. Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Just real quick.
Yeah.
Regarding e-bikes, cuz I know the MPs would be the ones enforcing that. Are, there's some questions around like Wheeler Middle and the Wheeler Elementary School about how the MPs are gonna go about, you know, enforcing that? Like, we've basically told our students that they're not allowed to keep those e-bikes on school campus anymore, and they can chain it up off campus. And I guess I'm looking for more clarity on how the MPs plan to deal with that now that new rules are in place.
I'll take that one and bring it up, just I personally don't know.
Okay, thank you, Ethan. Okay, any other questions? Kate, seeing none, thank you very much, and happy holidays. And going down to item 3B, we are government agency Board of Water Supply, Nicole? Nope, okay, not here. And Department of Transportation, Fawn, has said that she will not be able to make tonight's meeting. So we are moving on to, oh, yes, go ahead.
I have a question.
Yes.
For Department of Transportation.
Of DOT, okay.
Yeah. You know, when they put out the cones cuz of the construction on California, they're starting to put it beyond, before you get, if you're coming from up the heights and you're coming down, they put it on the far, or they put it on before Kane Street. So the people turning right on Kane Street, it's really backing up traffic. So if they cannot put those cones to block off Kane Street and just start it after Kane Street, that would be very helpful.
Okay, so Kane, so that intersection at, at the corner of Kane and, well, North Kane and California, that's who you're talking about? So they are, the last time I spoke to them, they're actually almost done is what they were saying, on that corner. And if you look at Kane Street, they've actually pretty much cleared off on that, on that area as well. So Kane Street is a city street, California Avenue is under state, so.
Right, but this, they're only blocking it off not because of any construction on Kane, but because of, they want that, just one lane.
They want the wheel, yeah.
Yeah, there is construction on the corner of Kane Street.
Right.
Yeah, but there's times when there's not, and, and it's still.
Okay, well, I can forward that. I can call DOT and.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can follow up on that.
And actually, if I could just make a suggestion, when you drive by, you'll see the trucks there. I think it's IMC or IPC. You can actually get their phone number on there because we've had them come out to the area in front of Foodland, the Foodland Shopping Center, the, the entrance and the exit, and they've addressed issues there, and they're very, very hands-on. So, you know, like I said, maybe go park in the, in a, park someplace where you can get their phone number and give them a call. If not, you can also call Councilmember Matt Wire's office, and they've been really great in addressing the needs of the, concerns of the community, especially regarding that because it, it has been a few months and they've had a few blips along the way. So, yeah, but yeah, call them though because the guys are really nice. And, you know, we asked them and they came out, they didn't realize what, what we as everyday drivers see maybe before, I'm sorry, in the evening when they're done, and they fixed it like the next day. So, yeah, stop by and say hello if anything.
Okay. Any other community concerns at this point? Yes, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, we are not in the, I'm sorry, I'm one, I apologize. I gotta make the DOT, I apologize. Sorry about that. I didn't check it out. Okay, any other questions for DOT? Okay, moving on to item four, residents' concerns and community announcements. The first, there are two announcements, and then we'll go to the, to the community. The first announcement is the 2025 Wahiwa Christmas Parade is taking place on December 5th, 2025, at 6:30 PM. And Michelle, this is for you. Parade starts at Kaala Elementary School and ends at North Kane Street by California Avenue. So I'm sure that they will have HPD on assignment in, on that event. Again, that is December 5th, 2025. And the next item is not listed there, but again, with the board's support, I would like to make a motion to call for a moment of silence under our residents' concerns and community announcements. And this would be for two very longtime Wahiwa Whitmore Village residents that have had an amazing impact on our Wahiwa and Whitmore Village communities over the decades, the love and the aloha they did for all of us as kids growing up. And I'm gonna get all emotional, I'm sorry. But they were very, and it's Mr. James Pui passed away and Auntie Rose Meidunka passed away, stalwart people. Stallwork people in the Witmore community. Meaningful, purely loving people in Wahihua as well. So if there is no objection, can I have a motion to add this moment of silence onto our agenda? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, and everyone would join us for a moment of silence with great aloha to Uncle James Kui and Auntie Rosemary Dunka. Mahalo, thank you, Auntie, thank you, Uncle. No, that was just an announcement, yeah, yeah. Right, yeah. Okay, thank you. So we are now moving on to our section six for elected officials. Mayor, oh, I'm sorry.
Community concerns, no.
I'm sorry, okay, we have something else?
Yeah, we have a community member.
Sorry, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I told you I was all emotional.
Name too, so while she's going up there, I just wanted to say Auntie Rosemary was a fixture here. I moved into Witmore in 1980 something and Auntie Rosemary was already here at Witmore Village, Witmore Gym. And up until months before she passed, she was here opening the doors for the kids during the summer programs. She was instrumental in making sure that the kids all got in, everybody had a good time. And as far as Mr. Kui, his wife Auntie Marion is also, if I'm not mistaken, still here. And again, she was here at the gym back in the eighties and I'm sure before then. So their losses this year just touched all of us. And I, I know Chair Ishikawa knew them dearly. So our heartfelt condolences to the families and to the community because they were indeed gems that we will remember for always. So, community member, take it away.
Aloha, Nani Brown Ko Inoa, noa Wahihua maiao. My name is Nani Brown and I come from Wahihua. I am speaking today because in 2022, a federal investigation revealed that there was a sitting lawmaker that took a $35,000 bribe. Currently, nobody in the House or the ledge wants to investigate who took that money, even though two people already went to prison for it. So as a Democrat with a spine and my Allah's in the northern region, maybe we can say that, I demand that we reveal the person who took the money and that we hold them accountable. I am tired of feckless and ineffective leadership in our democratic, you know, you know. Well, yes, but you, sorry, you know, it's kind of a lot of, there's a lot going on. But as Democrats, because we're in power, we need to hold our own accountable and we need to do so in an unapologetic way. Because iron sharpens iron and anyone doing corruption makes us all look bad. So I am circulating a petition to make sure that this investigation takes place and that we reveal not only who took the money, but also who is complicit and that we should demand accountability for our democratic process. I've circulated it among the audience already and then feel free. And I can hold it close if you want to zoom in for any of our current and watching state representatives to also add some public comment and encourage this investigation as well. What we do know is it is an influential lawmaker. So it's somebody taking money, making big decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Nani. Any other announcements, just go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Board. My name is Daniel Gabriel. I have a couple of questions and I want to get to the bottom of some issues that I have. First, my question is what parliamentary procedures does this board apply? Robert's Rules of Order noted. I've seen in multiple meetings, a breach of Robert's Rules of Order and I'd like to see that rectified. My second question would be, well, what is going on with Lake Wilson? It's the lowest I've ever seen it. I understand that Dole is selling it to the state. I don't think it has gone through all the way, but I'd like to know why the water level is so low and why we aren't doing anything to correct that. It's a great resource in terms of fire prevention. If we need to load water up from, for a helicopter. It's a great recreational venue for the people of Wahihua and the island overall. And I'd like to address that to the Water Committee and see what is going on with that. I haven't gotten answers from anyone that I've asked so far. Again, also referring to the Water Committee, I'm the state of Hawaii's only certified water specialist through the Water Quality Association. I was told, I understood at another meeting that Jeffrey Jones said that we as community members can sit on committees. I gave my information to the Chair Ishikawa. I was not reached out to, I have not heard any response yet. I also sent an email to Chair Ishikawa and I still haven't gotten a response from either Chair Ishikawa or Ms. Yoro that sits as the Chair of the Committee. And I believe that's all I have, I yield, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that question for residents. And I know I mentioned this at a, I believe last month's meeting. If residents wish to be on a committee, they do request from the Chair and it has to be a board business item. So it can be consideration to add resident, resident's name to be a part of the, in this case, Water Committee. And then the board here at the regular board meeting would vote. And then from that point on, you would be a member of the committee. And that doesn't just go for the gentleman who share the questions. It can be for anybody who wishes to serve on the committee. If they want to be considered, they reach out to Chair, it's a board business item and then we go through the process that way. So, and for that, the residents don't hold officer positions with the committee, they're just committee members. So they could go to the committee meetings, they still are under the Chair and Vice Chair or Co-Chairs of the committee. They just help facilitate the conversations, they can help answer questions, things of that nature. They're just not an officer of the committee.
I believe you were there when we were doing so, you saw that the committees were filled, the slots. So you can come in, so there is nothing preventing you. Once they start meeting, there's nothing to prevent you from sitting in on a meeting. But each of those committees have a Chair on it already, yeah.
Chair, just wanted to clarify for any other committees. So once we have the Chairs, community members can reach out to the board for a space on the committee. And so we don't need to have them as an agenda item?
So for, for any residents who want to serve on the committee, it has to go through the Chair and has to be a board business item for the board to decide. And it would be, the verbiage would be something along the lines of consideration to add or consideration for resident so-and-so to be a member of the blank committee. And the board would take up the motion, they would go through a discussion and decide and vote if that resident should be on that committee or not. Same like how an election of officer or a filling of vacancy would be.
Oh, go ahead, Yvonne.
Mahalo, mahalo, Daniel, for your questions. We actually haven't had a meeting yet for the Water Committee, but I totally acknowledge your concerns and would love to have a discussion about Lake Wilson. And if it's okay with the Chair, would I be able to just get Daniel's email directly so that we can correspond? Is that okay?
As long as you CC me on it.
Of course, yes, so yeah. Maybe we can just exchange contacts after, thank you.
And then I also wanted to address some of the other questions that he had. Number one, Lake Wilson is low because this is not rainy season yet. If you grew up, have you been in Wahihua for very long? Yeah, so if you grew up in Wahihua, you know when the rainy seasons are. And when the rainy seasons are, we are holding our breath sometimes because the water does rise. There are members in the community here that can attest to that. A lot of us have grown up on that lake. So right now, the water is low because we are just coming out of the vella season, the hot season. We are going into the rainy season. And while it is true that that Lake Wilson, hmm, I have to watch what I say. Because Lake Wilson itself is part of DLNR, if I'm not mistaken. And although portions of it are owned privately along with Dole and one other or two other entities, the portion that they own does not necessarily encompass Lake Wilson. It encompasses the dam and the area that surrounds the dam. And I too would be happy to have a conversation along with you and Ms. Yvonne about that. I have been on the lake and I have done a lot of research, as has Senator Delacruz's office along with DLNR, as they move forward to have a project that will be coming up in the next year or so. So before you leave, please share your contact information with us. And I'd love to share the information that I have with you and also with Ms. Yoro if she doesn't already have it. But thank you for bringing that up, great question. And I hope to see you at all of our community meetings, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, any other questions on the, go ahead, Michelle.
This isn't a question, but since we're talking about committees and so forth, maybe now's a good time to mention about written reports and things. Written reports from all the committees and all.
Okay, so as far as written reports, the only thing that the committee Chair and Co-Chair are responsible for are of course the agenda, which of course get to me a week before their scheduled meeting. And they go out on the sixth day in a physical mail-out and online posting. It would be, it is definitely preferred if the committees, the committee chairs can get their agendas in the same day as the regular board meeting mail-out. It does require a little bit of planning, but that way every agenda goes out at the same time versus having multiple mail-outs done throughout the month, kind of limiting, one, limiting the footprint with the amount of paper that would be going out with that much printing. But as, and as well as office resources with the physical mail-outs. The other thing is the committee minutes. So the committee chairs and co-chairs are responsible for their own minutes. They do not have to be as extensive as the minutes that I provide for the regular board meeting. There just has to be a sufficient written record of what happened in the committee. Usually, board members will take their agendas and they'll just make bullet points under each agenda item as far as who said what, how the conversations went. And if any decisions were made on maybe a potential future discussion or a potential future presentation, things of that nature.
Any, yeah, go ahead. Can you ask Gabriel? Yeah, we're in discussion right now, right, still, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want clarification because you mentioned when you first got up that, you know, what rules of decorum do we follow? We said Roberts. Then you mentioned that there's very, there were a few breaches and I'd like to know what they are since it's already on record in South there, that what are we doing that's not good?
Specifically, in, I believe it was the July meeting, there was a back and forth between Member Karezma and Kelly Anaya of Matt Wire's office that left the decorum. There was a kind of a nasty back and forth. And it's actually the members, the committee, the council members, I'm sorry, neighborhood board members' job to address the Chair, not someone of Matt Wire's office. Also, I've seen a few instances where the Chair is calling for support behind a certain motion when in fact it should be called as a motion and then seconded by another member. So those are the few things that I've come to mind. I'm just, I go to a lot of different neighborhood boards and I see them ran differently. And I'm just wondering if they should all be succinct and the same.
Thank you.
So actually, Mr. Gabriel, would you please go back to the mic? I wanted to ask, so when, when there are breaches, as you said, in the process, can you tell us what the process is to fix the breach? Is that what it is, Sylvia?
Well.
To address or, yeah.
Well, it's actually, as a community member, there's nothing that I can do. It would be a neighborhood board member to call someone to be out of order or a point of order.
I would ask that you review the Robert's Rules of Orders because I think if you're participating as a community member in a meeting that's governed by Robert's Rules of Orders, there are specific processes that you can take up to address the breaches, whether it be at another meeting or with the NCO or with the Chair or with the board. I'm pretty sure there are processes, I'm pretty versed in Robert's Rules of Orders as well. Thank you very much.
Just to, just to clarify, there was a mention of Robert's Rules, but there also was a mention for the Order and Decorum, which is more so filling in, I guess, to what the Sunshine Law would be for what the board also follows. And just to clarify, if there are breaches and there are issues that either disrupt Robert's Rules, break Order and Decorum or Sunshine Law, I know the point was made, it is up to the board members to call for a point of order and essentially fix the issue. Yes, just for the point that you did make up at the microphone, it was both Robert's Rules and Order and Decorum and Sunshine Law, just wanted to make sure that was clarified for the record. The Order and Decorum is, is mentioned on the top of our agendas. But of course, there's more substantial and more in-depth of what that is in separate documents.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, members, thank you, Board.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, hi.
Hi, welcome.
Good to see you.
Aloha, mahalo for having me. My name is Pony Askew and I'm actually speaking on behalf of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. I'm the Director of Economic and Business Resilience. I'm choosing to provide my updates in this format until we are accepted an opportunity to be a part of your agenda on a hopefully every three month basis. We'd like to be more present in the community and offer our updates, especially as a 500 acre landowner in this community. I think we should have a place on the agenda. So I would love a opportunity to do that on a three month basis. But for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, I think the most important update that I wanted to provide tonight was our EOLA Emergency Relief Program that OHA has launched as a response to the 2025 federal government shutdown. OHA actually committed $6.1 million in emergency assistance programming, approved by OHA's Board of Trustees to provide immediate short-term financial relief to Native Hawaiian families. And I do realize that the government has reopened, but I don't think that that negates the impact to our people during that, from October 1st till I think it was last Friday that the government reopened. And so we are still committed to continuing and supporting our Native Hawaiian beneficiaries. One of the opportunities that our beneficiaries have is essential needs support. We're providing up to $350 per person. OHA decided to focus on kupuna, disabled adults, low-income adults and those who do not have dependents because that was where the governor was not covering support. And so we wanted to cover where the governor wasn't supporting, which is, I think the focus was on TANF relief individuals. And so often our kupuna and disabled beneficiaries are forgotten about and we wanted to make sure that they were supported. We also are offering a $1,200 per person income bridge support for Native Hawaiian furloughed federal civilian workers that are earning up to 400% of the federal poverty level. And that is like a lot of different numbers. So you can pull up the table on oha.org to find out if you are, were a furloughed federal worker, if you fall within that 400% or below federal poverty line. So to be eligible, you must be Native Hawaiian, verified through the OHA's Hawaiian Registry Program, live in the state and meet program-specific criteria, either SNAP-impacted or furloughed federal workers. But we also, to deploy this, are working with Hawaiian Council because we found that they had the capacity to deploy this quickly and be a little more agile than the state of Hawaii can be at times. And so the best route to go is to contact Hawaiian Council or CNHA for more information and to get that federal relief funds, so mahalo.
Thank you, plenty, any questions from the Board? Yes, go ahead, Joe.
Just a quickie, how else are you getting the message out other than this?
So we've been posting on social media, collaborating with Hawaiian Council and their social media. And then Chair Kaikaheli has been doing quite a bit of news outlet and media releases as well. So, but you hit on a good point. We want to continue to get the information out there with the demographics that we're looking to support. Kupuna isn't typically on social media, right? They might be watching the news, but, you know, and then also disabled adults or those without dependents could even include our houseless Ohannas. And so we are looking for ways that we can continue to get the word out there to continue to get the support that we committed to with the $6.1 million.
There is a seniors' club in Wahiwa that meets monthly. I'm not sure exactly what day, but that would be a good one to go to.
Yeah.
The Holicoa Building.
You didn't look that old. You don't look that old.
Yeah, so we want to get that information out on the microphone. Ms. Brown, you said every Monday, 9:00 at the Wahiwa Rec Center.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's really good to know.
And thank you, Ms. Pony. It's been, I was able to help quite a few actually kupuna and disabled and those that were single with no dependents that didn't come under that temporary aid for needy families. And one of them actually called me today and said, sorry, that she had gotten an email from OHA saying that she had been approved.
Oh, good.
And she was over the moon. I don't know how else to put it. So thank you for continuing to do the outreach here. And if you don't know, Pony is actually a product of Wahiwa, born and raised. Nana is 91.
98.
98, my goodness.
Walker Avenue.
Walker Avenue. So thank you. Thank you for bringing this information out. It's very important that our community, so if you still need information or need help getting that, please reach out to CNHA for assistance.
Yeah, mahalo. And if I can mention one more thing, the importance of kupuna, besides being one of the, I guess, demographics that often fall through the crack, is that a lot of folks don't know that as of November 1st, in order to continue your SNAP benefits, you have to work 20 hours a week. And for our kupuna, you know, to ask of our kupuna to do that 20 hours a week is really problematic. And especially when we look at rural communities and kupuna working within rural communities. And so if this support can support our kupuna for just this federal furlough, I really do hope that we can continue to find ways to support them because I think there's going to be a lot more challenges ahead for them. So mahalo.
Thank you. Go ahead. One more question. Go ahead.
On that, for the kupuna, isn't there an age? If you're beyond a certain age, you don't have to work for the SNAP? I think there is an age limit on that.
You know, our advocacy division right now is trying to get all those details, including for Native Hawaiians, at least, if we can get the same waivers that because we're not a federally recognized tribe, federally recognized tribes are waived. We're trying to get ourselves included in that. But we're also trying to get that exact information on what age range that that may or may not qualify them at. So we have our advocacy team looking into those details further. It's such a new thing that there's a lot of stuff going on. But the biggest concern is with our kupuna, who is informing them and letting them know that this could be coming down the pipeline for them? Or do they just wake up one day and not have a reloaded SNAP card?
And there is actually lots of information on the DHS and the SNAP website. So you can take a look. You can also reach out to the governor's office for information, for a phone number if you are not able to use the web. If you don't have computer access, you can reach out to them and they can provide those numbers for you as well. But like you said, the details are all over the place.
Yep.
And hopefully, before too long, everybody will be on the same page again.
And then lastly, sorry, one more thing. For OHA, kupuna is 60 years and over to qualify for the SNAP. So I know there's different numbers. We picked 60. Mahalo.
Thank you again. And we have Sierra online. Sierra?
Aloha, everyone.
Hi. Can you hear it?
Sierra Martin. Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're good, Sierra. Go ahead.
Aloha, everyone, people of the community and members of the board. My name is Sierra Martin. I am in representation of KWO Homeless Outreach. We are a nonprofit agency based in Kapole, and we do serve the Wahiwa area, well, Wahiwa and Mililani on Tuesdays every week. I just wanted to provide a short report for last month. So in the month of October, we have encountered 62 individuals, of which 24 were service-resistant. We also received 10 community concern reports. And we have a total of 23 households containing 28 people that newly joined our program. In addition to that, we also have five households that were referred to a housing program, and they are currently awaiting placement. For anyone new that is not aware of our agency, I did want to share just a little bit, just for your information, because we do get a lot of the community concerns from people of the area, and also we get them from HPD as well. So you are more than welcome to give us a call at 808-728-5034. Our hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And again, we do a different city every day. So on Tuesdays, we are typically in either Wahiwa or Mililani area. And we do our best to try to respond to every report that we get. And right now, we don't have any announcements at the moment. But if we do have anything new, I will be updating members from the board on that.
Thank you, Sierra. Standby. Any questions from the board? Go ahead, TJ.
Hi, Sierra. Thank you for all that you guys do. And I know while your office hours are Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:00, or something like that. I know that you guys are out there almost seven days a week, so thank you. And I also wanted to ask, I know we just had someone from OHA just share about the $6.1 million that's being distributed to Native Hawaiians. Have you folks encountered anyone recently that would qualify or maybe qualify for this support from OHA?
We have encountered a couple, not a lot, and we are starting the process for them in that matter. It is still a lot of information to kind of take in. So instead of, you know, pushing all of that information out towards everyone from the get-go, we don't want to get hopes up. We want to make sure that they qualify first before we even offer that option. But yes, we do typically run into kupuna that qualify for that program.
Great. Thank you so much for your information tonight, and happy holidays. Please be safe out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sierra. Happy holidays.
Thank you, you too, all.
All right, thanks. Okay, any other questions or anything else in this section? I see, I think we're good. Okay, I think we're good under residents' concerns and community announcements. And we did our move and object this. So now we are in Section 6, elected officials. From Mayor's Office, is Kevin on board?
I'm here, Chair. Can you hear me?
Hi, how are you?
Thank goodness. I apologize about last month.
I know, we missed you. When you had this technical stuff, we had technical stuff this morning too, so no worries.
Never ends. I've got some announcements, and then we'll go through the riser reports. Some of those might be out of date because I wasn't able to present last month. But if they're redundant, let me know. If there's anything I missed, please let me know. Highlights from the mayor's newsletter this month. The skyline, Segment 2, is open for service, adding five miles and four stations, including Pearl Harbor and the Daniel K. Inoue International Airport. The city's early education center next to Honolulu Halli is relocated to Mission Memorial Auditorium, while a multi-year repair begins on the municipal parking structure above. New sewer rates go into effect on January 1st for Oahu residents. And the November 25 edition of the mayor's newsletter can be found at honolulu.gov/mayor/newsletter. Couple of quick announcements. The Royal Hawaiian Band is holding a free concert at Blaisdell on Friday, November 28th, at 7:00 PM. The concert is free and open to the public. Doors at the Blaisdell will open at 6:00 PM, and seats on a first-come, first-served basis. The concert features a lineup, including Henry Capono and many special guests. The city will also be illuminating Thomas Square Park for concertgoers to enjoy before and after the performance. And Honolulu City Lights begins the following evening on November 29th with a traditional tree lighting ceremony at Honolulu Halli, followed by the Public Works Electric Light Parade downtown on King Street. There's a new system for electric press releases. The city and county has updated our press release distribution system to make it easier for Oahu residents and members of the public to sign up and receive these important updates. Subscribers began receiving press releases in their inboxes through the new system on November 5th. To sign up for city press releases, please visit honolulu.gov/mayor/newsletter-signup. That's all I have for announcements. For follow-up riser reports, there was a question to DPR if they could maintain and clean the Holicoa Room and perform that more regularly. DPR thanked the board for bringing that to their attention. We understand the window screens and restrooms were cleaned on October 30th. And moving forward, DPR is committed to cleaning the Holicoa Room at least once a week, and hopefully that's continued to happen. At the, I think it was in the August meeting, there was a question around a traffic study being conducted regarding creating a stacking lane at the Leila Hua High School and the Iliahi Elementary School. DTS completed an investigation, which included an updated review of the area's traffic collision history and site observations. The DTS updated review of collision history did not find any trends within the last past three years. Their recent site observation found that vehicles were lining up along the curve, fronting the high school during the afternoon school pickup hours. But that was, there was sufficient space for eastbound California Avenue traffic to get around the queue from east of the Methodist Church to the driveway of the high school. The observation also determined that there was insufficient space to install a lane to accommodate school traffic pickup, fronting the elementary school. In addition, official bus stops are located fronting both schools. Therefore, the DTS recommends maintaining the existing roadway configuration at this time. There was a question for, I think it was for DTS or Department of Transportation Services or Department of Facilities Maintenance. Can the lights and the clocks be repaired and the grounds cleaned at the Wahiwa Transit Center? According to the Department of Transportation Services, a work order request was sent to the Department of Facilities Maintenance on August 22nd to repair the exterior lights. And DFM is waiting for the new LED lights to be delivered. Upon receiving the LED lights, they'll get them installed. DTS engineers reset the clock on July 29th, and the grass and the vegetation along the transit center was cut on September 30th. Chair Ishikawa requested if she could put in a request for repaving the walkways on Kalani Avenue heading up to Wahiwa Elementary. And because the sidewalks were crumbling per DFM, the sidewalk repairs along Kalani Avenue from Kellogg Street to Valley Avenue began on the week of September 22nd. And the repairs will continue up to the intersection of Uoku Street and California Avenue. They didn't provide a date for when those repairs would be completed, and I can follow up on that. There was a question regarding a no-parking sign be replaced at the corner of California Avenue and Uluei Street. Apparently, a vehicle ran into the sign, and it's not there any longer. The Department of Facilities Maintenance inspected the intersection of California Avenue on October 14th, and there were no legal no-parking signs found in the area. A no-parking sign from corner to here was observed on California Avenue, fronting Trinity Lutheran Church. So DFM asked if the board could kindly provide the specific address of the missing no-parking sign so they can follow up. I don't think we really responded to the question there. There was a question regarding a tree in front of Wahiwa Value Add Product Development Center's fence, if it could be trimmed and if the surrounding area could be cleaned in the event there were any fallen branches. This request was referred to the Department of Parks and Recreation, Division of Urban Forestry, which is responsible for maintaining the city's street trees. But I don't have an update on that from DPR, and I'll continue to follow up. There was also a question to board a water supply regarding the concrete near the waterline work along Royal Palm Drive, and if that could be completely removed to prevent potential walk hazards. And I don't have an update on that, and I'm going to continue to follow up. That's all I had, Chair Ishikawa. If there's anything I missed, please let me know. And if there's any other questions, I'm obviously happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Greater report. Board members, any questions? Yes, go ahead, Michelle.
Hi, Kevin. Thank you for being here. You always do a good job. I read this article in Civil Beat recently that, given the mayor is trying to work on the homeless situation and so forth, and the plan was to give out citations to all these people that are lying on sidewalks and things. I read that as of August 2024, at least three-quarters of the citations given out, which are in the thousands, three-quarters are being just dismissed by the judges and/or dropped by the prosecutors. So isn't this kind of a waste of time for everybody, police, judges, everybody? What's the solution?
Yeah, I'm the housing specialist, not the homeless specialist. It is an intractable problem. You know, there was an interesting article by Cam Knapp here in the Hawaii Pacific Business News that basically said, you know, why aren't we being more aggressive? So on one hand, you know, you try to be aggressive, and then, you know, the prosecutor's office doesn't, or the judges don't hear the cases. And on the other hand, you get criticized for not being aggressive enough. I don't have any specific and concrete answers to that. We can certainly, you know, I can bring it up at Cabinet on Wednesday, and, you know, maybe it's time that we reach back out to the communities to provide an update on what we're doing, what's working and what's not. But I don't have any specific answers tonight for that question, but I'll obviously be happy to follow up.
Any other questions from the board for the mayor's office? Questions from the community? Questions from the community? And virtually. Erin, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Evening, Kevin. Thanks for the thorough update.
Aloha.
So you mentioned that you are in charge of housing. So segueing off of Michelle's comment, how many new units that are actually affordable are being projected to be billed in, I guess, 2026?
Yeah, so that's a great question. And boy, I could give you an hour-long presentation on what we're doing around housing. When the mayor came into the office, the Office of Housing had exactly one person that was coordinating both housing and homelessness for a population of a million people. And that made absolutely zero sense. In 2023, the mayor, in his State of the City address, announced that he would be looking into that and how we reorganize housing functions in the city. We haven't had a centralized housing function since 1998. In 2024, he announced that he had approved a plan. In 2025, in May this year, that plan was approved by city council, and our budget was approved for a new Department of Housing and Land Management in July. So we're actually, we have a brand-new Department of Housing. We have the ability to staff a platform with 52 professionals focused specifically on housing. We're in the process of reorganizing and concentrating all the housing functions on that platform. And earlier in this year, we worked with the governor's office to allow the city to issue requests for qualifications under the governor's 14th emergency proclamation, which allowed the city to issue requests for qualifications seeking which allowed the city to issue requests for qualifications seeking development partners so that we could activate dormant city lands. And so we've issued, and that we identified twelve properties. We've issued requests for qualifications for ten of those. We've selected development partners for eight. And by the end of the year, we'll have the remaining two out the door. That will create a development pipeline of affordable housing north of twenty five hundred units. That's unprecedented in the city that we've never done that before. It's also created capacity for the city because it's, we're now partnering with six or hopefully by the end of the year, seven different development partners. So that increases our capacity, our outreach and our ability to do more. The chief challenge that we have going forward is how do we, how do we finance those developments? Most, if not all, affordable housing development in the United States is financed through the Low Income Housing Tax Credit. And that, that resource in Hawaii is extremely limited. That program is facilitated and administered by the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation. And if you look at their awards over the last five years, the Low Income Housing Tax Credit has supported just less than a thousand units, approximately nine hundred and fifty units a year. Over the last three years, that number's dropped to eight hundred and fifty units. And that's primarily because costs are going up. So it's becoming increasingly difficult to finance these projects. So to answer your question, you know, we're, we're a new department. We're standing this up. The mayor, this has been on the mayor's agenda for years. We finally have it underway. We've developed a development pipeline of twenty five hundred units. We're going to continue to increase that, that pipeline. But working to finance those projects is our next, our next really, our next big hurdle. In fact, we recently partnered with the Center for Public Enterprise who assisted Montgomery County, Maryland, who initiated and piloted a really interesting and unique program to help finance projects. The Center for Public Enterprise was out in Honolulu two weeks ago. We brought them around to meet with city council members, administration leadership, state, house and senate representatives. So we're taking, you know, we're taking this, this, this challenge extremely seriously and trying to put the, the platform in place to address this. I think the challenge that we're going to have under the existing administration is that we're just going to simply run out of time. But hopefully we're, we're putting together a platform that's sustainable. You know, that the next team can, can pick up and continue to grow over time. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you. That was very thorough. I know this is your field of expertise, so I appreciate that concise answer. And that is exciting to hear that there's twenty five hundred houses.
Yeah, it's a first for the city. Thank you, Erin, for the question.
Thank you. That was a good, good description and inventory.
So, hi, Kevin. Thank you again for always. I mean, you, you're just like, everything is all wrapped up into one. So I just wanted to dovetail off what Board Member Erin was saying. So you did say that they were looking at developing twenty five hundred units. Would that be affordable? Would that be for, I mean, would they have any kind of residency requirements? Because I do know that while there are lots of housing that is being developed around the state, not just in the county of Honolulu, but a lot of them don't give preference to residents of Hawaii or even residents say you had a development in Wahe'aua. Will it give preference to those residents in Wahe'aua that are able to qualify to some degree for that? And
Yeah.
Um, I guess the other part of that is, are we going to be working with DPP to look at those empty houses and potentially turn that into a resource for our, for the new homeless? I don't know if it was new, but you did say housing and homeless. So is that something that DPP may be looking at to find where all the empty houses are and turn that into a resource for our, this new division within the mayor's office?
Yeah, it's definitely on the agenda and I'm going to try to unpack all of those questions in one. So, so I guess the first one would be, is all that, all the housing that we have in the pipeline affordable? The Low Income Housing Tax Credit is primarily for sixty A M I and below area median income. So residents that earn sixty percent or less of the area median income can qualify for the, the Low Income Housing Tax Credit projects that get built. The biggest challenge that we have is keeping folks here on the city, particularly our young people, right? Because we're going to have a hollow of the middle if we don't try to find a solution to this problem. And so that require, you know, the sixty to the hundred and twenty A M I is a non-subsidized housing product. I mean, there's just no subsidy for that. So we have to find different ways to finance that. One of the ways that we're exploring is that maybe a portion of that, those developments, maybe twenty five, thirty percent of those developments can be lower income, lower A M I. And a higher level can be at market A M I so, so that some of those rents, the higher rents can help set, offset the lower rents, right? We're still working through that and trying to develop that. With respect to the question around homelessness, one of the big, you know, we've been working with this, with the city council for about a year now. One of the real challenges that we have is just understanding what we have in our inventory and the data around that. You know, over, over years and years and years, the city acquires property. But we have different systems, you know, the, the properties are acquired for different purposes and that inventory is maintained in different systems. So trying to get an aggregate understanding of what we have has been a real challenge. That's something that we're working on right now so that we can try to understand, for instance, vacant parcels that the city has across the, across Oahu. When I was responding to council member, Board Member Mendelson's question, you know, that pipeline of twenty five hundred units, the ten sites that we, that we put up to bid through requests for qualifications to development partners, those were properties that were in our inventory. They were existing properties, so we're leveraging public land to build more housing. But some of those properties, Board Member Crismo, were, had been in our inventory for literally decades. And so now we're, it's an opportunity to activate them. So we're trying to, we're trying to do as much as we can. When we split out the Department of Housing and Land Management from the Department of Community Services, we did that intentionally so that the Department of Community Services could focus on homelessness and, and homeless services. And the Department of Housing and Land Management could focus on land transactions and development and finance because they're completely different skill sets. I'm a development finance guy, but I, I don't know anything about the social services required to sustain somebody who needs supportive services or who's coming out of homelessness.
Thank you very much. And I also wanted to add, there are quite a few philanthropic families and foundations that already have roots in Hawaii, the Algiers, the Weinbergs, each of the major corporations, Chevron, Ball, you name it. They all have philanthropic arms, that they all have philanthropic foundations. Have, has that been a pipeline to be explored yet? Has that even, has there even been a conversation?
Boy, maybe I could get an hour to come in and give a presentation on what we're doing around housing. Because we recently, you know, as we explained in our platform, we folded in a, a housing policy division within the Department of Housing and Land Management, which I'm the designated director of. The individual that we identified to help run that policy division group is Gavin Thornton, who ran Appleseed Hawaii for sixteen, seventeen years. So he's very tied into that community. In fact, Partners in Care had its annual conference last week and there were countless members there. But we are very focused on how can we do more partnering together with philanthropic organizations to do more and do it faster. That's a real goal of, of the department. It's a great question. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And let's not forget about our beautiful Powahie. She is there and she was one that cared deeply along with our last queen, who cared deeply about all of our, our people. But thank you, Kevin. And feel free to reach out to me. You know what my resources are as well. Thank you.
Sure. Well, thanks very much for that.
Thank you, Kevin. Any other questions from the board? Any other questions from the board? Any questions? I'm going to move any.
Excuse me. I just, kind of what he was talking about. TJ, you know, it's not reaching out to you personally. It's reaching out to the chair. And then if anything needs to be filtered. And that kind of what you were talking about with the rules and so forth. Yeah, so I'd just like to mention that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any questions from the community?
Aloha, Kevin. Thank you. That is a very thorough presentation. My name is Nani Brown. I recently sat in a meeting with H H F T C and I got to see three developers, and this is regarding the affordable housing. They had already been approved for well over a hundred million dollars throughout the state. And they were coming back to H H F T C begging for approval because their units were not selling. And so they were begging to be sold at market price. And there was one gentleman in particular, I was there for a different reason. I just happened to come across this. There was one older gentleman who said, you know, I want to pay you guys back and I want to be rid of this deal. But I really need to sell more at retail to, you know, just get this finished. And H H F T C was, you know, considering approving that. And I want to know what you guys plan to do to maintain affordability, regardless of whether the developer makes his profit or not. Because the purpose of this project is for our people to receive housing, not for them to get in the door under the guise of, we're building affordable housing. And then once they do it, they jack up the price and nobody can buy it anyway.
Thank you for the question. I'm not familiar with that particular transaction. I think from the city's perspective, you know, the more that we can do and the more that we control that we have over a project, particularly in terms of providing city land and providing financing for projects. We're also the regulatory authority, so we're private, improving entitlements and, and permitting, you know, puts us in a position where we have the ability to maintain affordability and, and we want to do that into perpetuity, right? We really want to make certain that, you know, with the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, projects can potentially convert to market after fifteen years if there aren't, if there aren't appropriate guardrails on those transactions. At the city, we want to ensure that our projects maintain affordability forever into perpetuity. That's why that control is really important. But thank you for the question.
Thank you. Any other questions from the community? Questions virtually for mayor's office? Okay, hearing none. Mahalo, Kevin. You did a great job.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Have a great vacation, weekend, holiday, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Councilmember Wire's office, Kelly.
Hi, Kelly.
Hello, Chair.
Hi.
You guys hear me?
Yep, good. You're good.
Awesome. Good evening, Chair and members of the board. Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wire's office. Just had a couple of things I wanted to highlight from Councilmember. It was great to see you as well as the Wahe'aua community last week Tuesday at the Veterans Day Parade. Councilmember wanted to thank all of our veterans for their service and for their sacrifice. Likewise, to the Wahe'aua Lions who continues to organize their annual tradition. I believe this was the seventy, seventy ninth parade that they had. Also to highlight, I believe, Representative Takuta's rep mentioned about the shutdown ending. Also to touch upon that, Councilmember wanted to provide some information and resources. You know, even though the shutdown has ended, you know, it's still going to take some time for some of our families to recover. So I'll be putting some of that information and resources in the chat. Um, also wanted to highlight, you're there at the Whitmore Gym. Super excited. After much anticipation, the gym is finally completed and super excited. You've got new roofing, flooring, fresh paint. So thank you to the community for your patience. And then lastly, I just wanted to let everyone know, E N V Environmental Services is holding a town hall this Thursday, November twentieth, from six P M. To eight P M. at the Wahe'aua District Park at the Holly Coha Room. This is going to be about the upcoming sewer fee adjustments that are scheduled to take effect January first of next year. And I think that's it. And then a couple of updates from last month. Thank you to Director Alge for giving the highlights of the Holly Coha Room. Yeah, I also received the, the update from DPR that they did clean the ceiling fans and the screens. And of course, you're not there tonight. So hopefully somebody was able to go in, check on that. Yeah, they did say that they were planning to, or they, they do have regularly scheduled maintenance for that room. I'm not sure if Dean is there, but to highlight or update on his questions from last time. I'm still waiting to hear back on the naming of the train carts. Um, I guess it was routed to DT, to Hart rather, but it's actually something that Department of Transportation Services is in charge of. So I'm still waiting to hear back on that. Other than that, that's all for me. If anyone has any questions for Councilmember, I can take them back.
Thanks, Kelly. Standby. Board members, a question? Go ahead.
Um, yeah, thank you, Kelly. I want to bring this to your attention because you've been really good about communicating with us regarding the Royal Palms on Palm, Royal Palm Drive. Two days ago, a very large tree broke in half on Dole Road and fell. And luckily, nobody was hurt, but it was a very large tree. And the fire department came, cut it up, and then the rest of the tree, I think a city and county crew or I'm not sure who, but somebody came and removed the rest of the tree. My question is, you know, Wahe'aua was an aging community, not just in people, but in the trees that surround it throughout the community. I know we have state roads and city and county roads and, and I don't know what Dole Road is. I don't know what, what is what, but is there any possibility to prevent further somebody getting hurt? Can one, one of, somebody with knowledge about trees that are aging and can they make a, a trip around Wahe'aua and look to see if any of them need to be, you know, cut down or trimmed or, I don't know what to do about that or who to, or even if you're the right person, maybe you could steer us in the right direction. But there are a lot of trees and a lot of them have been cut down on the Dole Road, California side. Some of them belong to the Petersons. They've done a great job of taking care of those trees that are dying. And so they trim them. But I think the other side of the road is city and county. I'm not sure. But if you could look into that, I would appreciate it.
Sure. So I did have a similar request, not in Wahe'aua. But, you know, as I'm sure you're aware, Dole is severely short-staffed as well. It would really help them if the community or yourself are able to kind of narrow down some of the specific areas, like I said, Dole Road, you know, because for them to send out an inspector to drive through all of Wahe'aua Town, I don't think they're going to be able to do that. So if there's maybe some way that we could even collaborate with, you know, Councilmember's office and maybe yourself, we could try to work something out to see if we can try to narrow down some of the more, I guess, severe ones, if you will, and then to kind of help Dole.
Can we start with Dole Road, though? If we just start with Dole Road right now and then, then I'll, I'll, I'll be the one that travels around and I can take pictures and communicate with you.
Yeah, I don't mind getting my steps in, so if you want me to go with you.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you. No problem. I'll go ahead and check it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Sylvia. Any other questions from the board?
Hey, Kelly. Thanks for all your hard work. And I just wanted to express a big mahalo nui loa from the residents in and around near in the vicinity of Avocado Street. They, I've received so many calls and so many text messages about the residents in that area that use that street again. They love that the building is no longer there for the most part and that a lot of the kupuna in the area have started walking again. So big mahalo to you and Councilmember Matt Wire and your staff for being so diligent and helping us to make that area safe and full of aloha again. Thank you.
Thank you for your support. I'll let Councilmember know.
Yeah, that's another great report. Thank you. That is another good report. Thank you. Okay, any questions from the community? Virtually any questions? Okay, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
And if you don't mind, is Kevin? And if you don't mind, is Kevin still on board? Kevin?
Hi, Chair. He's still there.
Hi. My apologies. I missed relaying two questions from the community to you. And one is the Veterans Day Parade that took place. There were complaints, or at least I received complaints this morning, that on the Veterans Day Parade, the restrooms were overflowing. There was no toilet paper, the trash cans are overflowing. So from the morning, you know, when the crew gets down there, they're there like 7 o'clock setting up, 8 o'clock. So, and the parade starts at 10, but by then, they had hundreds of people in the park lined up and everything.
That location?
And at the park, and you know, the back, no, no, at the park, Fred Wright Park. At Fred Wright Park, because that's where they staged, at Fred Wright Park. And then there's a restroom on the backside of it, and it was like overflowing. And there was no one, they said they walked around the park, they walked around the gym. There was no one around that could help them to clean that up. So that could be followed up on. And the other one is the traffic lights. You had talked about the traffic by Lillahua High School that backs up from the parents and whatnot. The resident asked, can they work on doing the timing of the traffic lights? Because it's, basically, he said it's horrendous, you know, when the cars are lined up to get into Lillahua or Eliahi, and then they loop out to come back on California, and the traffic is backed up all the way, you know, from like at 2:30, 3 o'clock-ish. So the question was, can they try to work on making the timing of the traffic lights more efficient?
Sure. We'll follow up on this, Chair.
Okay.
Just one comment. Would it, you know, I'm not sure what the, I wasn't able to attend the Veterans Day Parade, but if it was, if it had significant attendance, would it make sense to have portables, portable restrooms also installed to handle some of that overflow?
I actually asked that question, and he's with the organization, and he said they're really tight on funds. It was very difficult for them to put every year, to put the parade together for all the things, the trolleys, you know, for the musicians, everything, whatnot. So I did bring that up, and he said, you know, if they had the funds, they would look into it, but they write a pretty tight budget.
Okay. We'll bring it up with DPR and follow up.
Okay, thank you. My apologies for missing that. Thank you. Going back to agenda, Governor's office is not, Rosemary is not able to make it tonight. So we move on to Senator De La Cruz's office.
Hi, Chair.
Hi.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board. Charles Miller from Senator De La Cruz's office. Senator attended the Veterans Parade. He also participated in the groundbreaking at the Central Wahu Echo for Food Hub. He also attended the Central Wahu Job Fair. Senator also attended the Taste of Wahiwa, and then Senator also met with the Wahiwa Rainbow Seniors. And then, addressing 525 Avocado Street, Senator De La Cruz is asking for community letters in support of DLR's efforts at 525 Avocado Street from the community. This is to address Governor Green's release of $1 million for land acquisition to purchase a parcel. The letters can be addressed to Chair Chang, and they can be sent to Senator De La Cruz's email. And then lastly, I would just like to wish everybody a happy and safe holiday season. Thank you, Chair.
Wow, that, I think, is your quickest report. That's your Christmas present. But you know what? Please tell the Senator what a fantastic event the Taste of Wahiwa turned out. I mean, that was a great turnout and a lot of interest. So I think that generated very good, you know, emotion and feelings in the community. So thank you. Please relay that to him. Any questions for the Senator's office? From the public community? Virtually, any questions for Senator De La Cruz's office? No answer. All right. Have a good weekend and happy holidays.
You're welcome, Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to Representative Prusso's office.
Aloha.
Hi.
Hi. Yeah, you're moving through reports really rapidly this evening. So I am really sad that I can't see the new gym. I'll take a look at it this week, but very excited that it was completed. So thank you to Councilmember Wires' office for facilitating that and making that happen. My report will also be short. We, I've been working on legislation to address waste management issues, frankly, and energy affordability in our district and across the state, and also working on the funding shortfalls that I've been talking about repeatedly over the past few neighborhood board meetings that we are going to see in the upcoming session and that we'll need to address because we are seeing these cuts to Medicaid and we are seeing these cuts to SNAP. And, you know, we already made the decision that we're not going to let people go hungry, and we're also not going to let people go without health insurance. So we will have to backfill those cuts. And I wanted to speak to, there was in the community concern section, a question with respect to this conversation around the corruption, I would say, the convictions that happened in 2022 and 2023 of Kalani English and Taya Cullen, and the reports that there is an additional lingering problem. I wanted to provide some clarification. The Speaker of the House has, with urging of members, including myself, submitted a request to both the AG and to the FBI, asking for guidance about the extent to which an inquiry made by the House, because we are the only body that's acting on this, would jeopardize the current federal investigation. And there were indications from both parties, from both the AG and the FBI, that it would, such an, such an inquiry on our part could jeopardize the federal investigation. And I also wanted to say that there's additional clarification that was provided from the FBI that was helpful for me, because initial news stories had kind of conflated two issues. One is that there was an individual who was supposed to be an influential legislature who had received $35,000. So some people call that person the $35,000 Bandit. And then there was also an allegation of a chargeable bribery offense. So most people, because of the text in which those two statements were identified, conflated the two, and those are two separate issues. So one person received $35,000, and it may have been improperly reported campaign donations that were meant to be, that were part of a bundling process. So bundling is a practice that is problematic and not proper, but there is a reporting process that's supposed to happen along with people who distribute campaign checks to multiple recipients, multiple candidates. And it seems like that, the problem with the influential legislature who received those funds, that might be a matter of failure to report campaign funds that were, other than that, not illegal. So multiple campaign funds that did not exceed the limit and were distributed to various people. So that's not something that rises to the level of a federal indictment. So that person will, I mean, when this all plays out, then we can take a look at what happened with that particular situation. Then there is a separate offense of bribery. And we don't know, based on the context, based on the information that's available, if that person is even a legislator, the person that is being bribed. So there's, for me, it was helpful to get that information because I had been also operating under the impression that it was a singular issue, and it's actually two different issues. So just wanted to provide some clarification on that. And then I also wanted to add that, you know, because we recognize that families are still struggling, we are, our office is working with the food bank and on December 10th with Kaala Elementary. And on December 20th in the afternoon, we're going to be having a drive-through food distribution. So we'll be advertising that and sharing that, because I think it's, in particular, right before the holidays, when food insecurity is especially painful. So I'm available for questions. There's so much more to talk about, but I could talk all day.
No, that's, it's a great report. I'm sure there'll be some follow-up. Standby. Any questions from the board for Representative? Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, Rep. Regarding the question of bundling, were you saying that the bundling money went to this influential unknown rep?
So this is the practice. I have not participated in it, but other legislators have, whereby a lobbyist will give a single individual a number of checks meant to be distributed to multiple candidates, like most likely multiple legislators. And that's bundling. And that is, that was the influential legislator who was doing the bundling.
And he just forgot to deliver the checks to other people?
No, I, we don't know anything about, like, what happened after. I am assuming that those checks got delivered and those checks were deposited in campaign accounts. And he just, you're supposed to report when you are collecting. And when you have control over multiple checks, you're supposed to report it. So we have laws in place that are meant to kind of delimit that kind of activity or to just provide some oversight or regulation. And, you know, a lot of times, people do not abide by the letter of the law. So I think we'll find out more as the situation unfolds, but that's my understanding of the situation right now.
Thank you. As a treasurer, I totally understand.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? And if not, I think Erin, you had a question.
Hi, aloha, Representative. I have a question about the Kaala food drive, and just food drives in general. In terms of donating food, like, I know you could give, you know, store-bought food. Is there any place that you know that you could donate produce? Like, you know, I know that there, like, my yard has star fruit or bread fruit. Is there a location that you would recommend? I know people in Wahiwa have, you know, extra fruits on their trees, but is there...
Yeah, there are food distribution sites that take local produce donations, and TJ is also really aware of these sites. I would say one really important one, as far as I'm concerned, is St. Stevens. And then also Surfing the Nations, they take local produce donations. And I think that's a great way to use local produce, because we are so blessed in Wahiwa. Our trees are just fruiting all the time. So that's a great question.
Okay, great. That's helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions for Representative? Okay, I think we're done.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Rep. Prusso. Chair, my question for Rep. Prusso has to do with energy affordability. I understand that she is working on some bills. My question is, we keep, we keep plowing over our, some of our most prime ag lands to install solar and wind mediums. When, when those technologies have been studied by energy efficiency boards, they're at somewhere around 23% efficiency, when nuclear is at 98% efficiently, efficiency. Now, I understand that is against the Hawaii Constitution to go with a nuclear power plant, but what is our legislature, or what have our legislators and Senate done in terms of perhaps changing that? Because if we want to talk about safety concerns from the research that I've done, the 3.0 and 3.5 generation nuclear reactors are very safe, even against military attacks. What, we are commonly scared of them because of what happened in Fukushima and Chernobyl, but those were much very early on, very early versions of nuclear power plants that were not secure. So I would like to know what our legislature and our Senate is doing to maybe explore those ideas and also to address safety concerns is, if you go down to Pearl Harbor, we actually have maybe five to six, maybe even more nuclear, mini-nuclear power plants sitting in our harbor at all times, i.e. carriers and nuclear submarines. I yield. Thank you.
Sure. So, yeah, we've been digging a lot into, as you mentioned, energy affordability and this relationship between renewable energy and more firm sources of power. And I think nuclear power would be considered a firm source of power. And that's why, in this last session, we created a working group on nuclear power in the legislature, and that working group is meeting. And they will be issuing a report at the, when they complete their investigation. So you had a lot of questions wrapped up in there and a lot of, you know, a lot of information that I think, you know, we, I would encourage you to really participate in the PUC's dockets. So there's a docket on affordability. And there's also an upcoming environmental caucus meeting precisely around the issue of affordability and sources of energy. So please continue to learn and study, and I support that. And, you know, I think we are part of a national conversation around energy. And really, what the data shows is, we're really, we're really lucky. Like nationally, people look to us and are so envious because we have such a high capacity to use solar. And I think some of the data might be coming from places where solar is not as effective. But the solar energy and the use of solar is becoming radically more inexpensive. It has, over the past 10 years, it's just gotten so cheap. So we really need to have, like, the, just the remainder of our power source that would provide more firm energy, that is a conversation source, though. So I appreciate the question.
Okay, any other questions from the community or Representative? Virtually, any questions for Representative? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much, Representative, and have a happy, happy holiday season.
You too.
We'll see you next year.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to our board business. Item seven on the agenda. We are at approval of minutes. May I have a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes of Monday, October 20th, 2025?
I move that we accept the minutes from October 30th, October 20th, rather, 2025.
Thank you, Joyce. Second. Who's second? Michelle, thank you.
Actually, Chair, I just wanted to make a correction.
Okay.
And Honolulu Police Department section, Lieutenant Scott Vieira's last name is misspelled. V-I-E-R-R-A should be corrected. First page, under the Police Department report.
Okay, Scott Vieira.
Yes, thank you.
Yep. Can we take a step back and do the motion again with the correction for HPD Officer Scott Vieira, V-I-E-R-R-A? Can I have a motion to accept the regular minutes of October 20th with the correction for HPD Officers Scott Vieira?
I'll make a motion to accept the changes to include the correction of Lieutenant Scott Vieira's last name to V-I-E-R-R-A.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, even though it's not legit. Thank you.
Wait, is it incorrect?
We already had a motion to accept it. And once the motion is accepted, she can make an adjustment, and we can say, we can approve it then.
Right. So it's like starting over, and that's why we have to do it. Right. I got it. Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes with the correction for the Monday, October 20th, 2025 minutes with the correction. Item B, Chair's Report and Board Actions. Call for disclosures. Any board members attended any meetings that we need to know about? Anything? Nope, nothing here. None? Okay, item two, Correspondence and Distribution. Anybody receive anything that we need to announce? Okay, none. Committee reports. Education. Erin?
No urgent reports. Lillahua has some fundraisers going on, but nothing urgent.
Okay, thank you. Military for June and Ethan? Okay. Transportation, Aunpo Joe? Okay. Transportation, Opo. Joe?
Opo's Citizens Advisory Committee has, has not held a meeting in November. So no report.
Okay, no report. And then Yvonne for Water? Okay, thank you. And Hawaiian Affairs, T J and Ethan? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item eight of the Agenda Announcements, Board Meeting. N V two six will be on recess for the month of December, two thousand twenty-five. Our next Wahiwa Whitmore Village Neighborhood Board Number Twenty-Six meeting will be held on Monday, January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-six, due to the Martin Luther King Holiday, which is held on January nineteenth. Please check the website for any updates for our meeting schedule. Item B, Information Contacts. City Streets Pothole Hotline, eight zero eight, seven six eight, seven 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 seven. The State Streets Pothole Hotline, eight oh eight, five three six, seven eight five two. Hart Maintain Roads Pothole Hotline, eight zero eight, five six six, two two nine nine. Cities Refuge Inspector's Office, eight oh eight, seven six eight, five two two zero. Schofield Noise Complaints, eight oh eight, six five six, three four eight seven. Their email is U S A G H I dot C O M R E L at gmail dot com. And the Public Affairs Office number is eight oh eight, six five five, four seven five six. Our holiday message to everyone, aloha, everyone. We've journeyed through another busy year of our two thousand twenty-five agenda and it really has been a busy year. It's crazy. Together, we addressed the community's years-long concerns regarding the Avocado Street issues. In May, an arsonist damaged Arkeki's new play apparatus in Fred Wright Park. But in June, a company donated materials and manpower to refurbish the damaged play apparatus. We addressed the illegal dumping on Ko Street and Kilani Avenues with great appreciation from the residents who have now taken ownership of monitoring that area. And we thank the several organizations who tirelessly can volunteer their time and share their hopes to serve the Anidi throughout Wahiwa and Whitmore areas. Mahalo to our Wahiwa Whitmore communities. Please take care and enjoy a safe and happy holiday season and see you in January, two thousand twenty-six. Okay, and last thing is N C O and Toys for Tots. The Neighborhood Commission Office is collecting donated children's toys, new and unwrapped, at tonight's meeting on Monday, November seventeen. If you have anything you'd like to donate, please turn them over to our Neighborhood Assistant. Thank, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Daniel Gabriel. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board. I just have one question regarding the ten, twenty minutes. Is there a neighborhood board member with the last name Kamai? Shortly after two hours and twenty-six minutes and twenty-four seconds, there was a motion from Kamai and Rosler, second to support the seventy-ninth annual, or seventy-ninth Wahiwa Lions Veterans Day. I am, I'm assuming it's a typo. I just wanted to verify.
That is a typo, yes. We do, just for clarification again for the record, the minutes are run through an A I program and then I go through and I proofread. Unfortunately, there is some human error sometimes. So I will make sure that is corrected before those minutes are published tomorrow morning.
Understandable. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, okay, got it. Okay, got it. Thank you. Okay. Okay, having said that, we are adjourned until next year. Mahalo, everyone. Thank you.